Okay, I'll keep looking and I'll hopefully find it, what we said in the P O C D. But I do remember we have the objective.
Right, and, and, and you know, no matter how this turns out, Abigail and I would be, you know, very pleased to help you if you, if you wanted to fine tune the, the regulations and make it an easier process for people because it's, it's, it's quite complicated and, and the bonus of it was that we got to meet a lot of people. And you know, the focus is on community character, but in reality, there's a lot of character in our community. And it was great to meet a lot of the people that we did to discuss these things. So it's, it's been a, 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 a long process, but a very rewarding one. So, thank you.
Patrick?
It is in Objective 1.2, Madam Chair.
The scenic roads?
Yes.
Oh, I was looking in the environmental section. What do you figure? And is there the thing about streamlining the process? Because that's what I found last night as well.
It, it says to revise and expand to encourage designation of more roads.
So I think. Yeah, and then this text of the P N Z says this designation not only encourages sightseeing along the road, but helps preserve it from modifications that would detract from its appearance such as rerouting or widening. The five currently designated scenic roads are Buckfield Lane, Burying Hill Road, Cliffdale, Selden, and Sawmill Lane. Narrow, unpaved, you know everything it says she then puts on. And so we do have it in the P O C D. And, I mean, the whole idea, and, and just to add a little bit of something, why would we prevent widening of roads? Because all the research, I was on another complete street seminar today. All the research is, the bigger and wider you make your roads, the more traffic and the more congestion you get. It doesn't help. And what they're saying over and over again is if you open it up for cars, more cars actually come immediately to your roads and you end up shortly down the road with more congestion. So, counterintuitive as it seems, keeping a road in a scenic setting is actually better for traffic. And that's what, it's interesting because I was trying to do something with Tracy today and I said to her, I can't talk to you because I'm listening to this whole thing on Complete Streets, which is the same concept. So just throwing that out there. Okay, shall we go to public comment? We have a whole bunch of hands up, including Mr. DeCaro, which is so nice of him to come. So hopefully we answered his questions. The first speaker is going to be Sam Romeo. And folks, if you could try to keep it brief, we haven't been limiting for time, but let's, if you could kindly limit yourselves, we're starting to get hungry too, right? Sam, if you're ready. Sam? There he is. Hello, Sam. Hello, Mr. Romeo.
Hello.
And the next speaker, the next speaker is R F S. Hello, Sam, Mr. Romeo, if you would go ahead.
Okay, well, first of all, I'm in favor of this. Somewhat of a historian of North Myanis. And Palmer Hill Road was the original route to Boston. And if you go back to, there's a book, I believe in the library, that says, I think it's called Before and After 1776 Greenwich. And if you look in there, the bridge is in that, one of the photographs, I believe was back in the 1800s, that sycamore tree that's at the corner of Valley Road and Palmer Hill. So that tree is well over 200 years old. And, and coming up Palmer Hill Road, all of those sycamore trees are probably well over 200 years old. Near my driveway, coming down Naval Way, there's one there that it's probably 250 years old, if not more. I was brought up in this area. Somewhat of a historian of what happened here during the revolution.
Yeah, you live on Palmer Hill, Mr. Romeo?
My street is off of Palmer Hill.
Okay, so this is your neighborhood. Okay.
Right. And originally, it was a dumpling pond that happened during the British when they invaded North Myanis. And they wanted the dumplings from the settlers and rather than feed them after they captured the bridge, after there was two battles to save it and soldiers came down from Fort Stamford to defend that crossing. They threw the dumplings in the pond rather than give them to it. I also might add that the bridge was crossed three times by George Washington. Twice as a general and once as a president. And I think about 10 years ago, we rededicated it when the Beatty Brothers reappointed the bridge and we rededicated it and we had George Washington there to cut the ribbon, dressed up in uniform. The, the sycamore trees are in the right of way. Most of those trees are in the, in the right of way. The area has more history than one would really know about the area. There's a plaque on the other side of Valley Road talking about the history of North Myanis and the Battle of the British when they came up the Myanis River before the dam was there. This used to be a tidal pond. And the sound used to come up right to North Myanis. And this was the upper crossing. North Myanis was the first business district for the entire town of Greenwich.
Where the little, where the little, the little stores still are now, right?
Right. So the first hundred years, this was the town's central business district. So I, I appreciate the Mrs. McCarthy and Alvarez that wrote this forward when I first heard about it. I was pleased. I wish I could have got involved with it sooner, might have known about it and got behind it. And Nick had brought a question up about the, the town and the curbing, if they want to put curbing in on, on their wood, restrict it. Well, before you get town funding, it takes you a year to get town funding. So if the Public Works has any plans in doing any kind of curbing in North Myanis, they would apply at the same time to get any of that work done. Everything is not done in a spur of the moment. It's done with long range planning. And if there's an emergency to be done, they're certainly be allowed to do emergency work. So I congratulate the ladies for bringing this forward. I'm pleased to endorse this. Again, like I say, I have a lot of history to say, but I don't want to take up your time about North Myanis and what happened here.
Well, I'm gonna send you the link to the book that they did. I don't know if they've shared it with you. Because I got a big kick out of it this weekend, looking at all the pictures.
I could probably add to it because.
Yeah, okay, I'll send it to you. And then you, they'd probably welcome you to add because they've got this website. But I'll send it to you because I just, you know, I love our town and I got such a kick out of seeing, learning more about this corner of our town regardless of the application.
I lived in North Myanis for 80 years, so I've seen a lot of changes.
Well, wait, how did you do that? Sam, you're only 50.
Yeah, I wish.
All right.
Again, like I say, I've seen a lot of things change here and I, I do have a lot of knowledge about the area. And as far as the scenic road ordinance goes, I was a land use chairman of the R T M. When we wrote this scenic road ordinance, I think Buckfield Lane was our first one that we passed.
Yeah, that's a, that's a beautiful area.
Right.
Every now and then when I'm super cranky, I drive up to Buckfield and that whole, that whole neighborhood.
Yeah, with Dick Stephanie. He was the driving force. So ladies, thank you for bringing that board and I hope to meet you and sit with you and discuss this.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Romeo. Our next speaker is R F S. And before you say anything, would you kindly tell and spell your name for the town, for the court reporter? And then Joanne Messina will follow.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, it's Renee Soblatnik.
Oh, hello. Spell it carefully. Soblatnik is not the easiest. I've seen harder, but go ahead.
S like Sam, E be like boy, L A T N I G G.
Tom, are you good with that? There it is. Okay, perfect. Look at, look at what the town planner did for you. All right, go ahead, Ms. Soblatnik.
Quickly, I, I really applaud the applicants. They've done a terrific job. And unfortunately, this is something that has the, the ordinance and the statute, they have a lot of holes in it. We dealt with this. I wrote the application for the Benny Park scenic road. And for instance, as we've discussed, the quote intensive traffic is undefined. So you just, there's no point in everybody putting their own definition on it that simply will not fly. Also, in number 11 on the application, it says it must be filed with the town clerk. I remember spending a great deal of time on the phone with the town clerk. The town clerk will not take such a filing. The town clerk explains, we only deal with changes in property rights. This has nothing to do with changes in property rights. So it's there on paper, but you can't use it. So you have to kind of roll along with it and do the best you can. I think you're doing that. I certainly think scenic road is, should apply to Palmer Hill. And the rest of it, unless somebody is ready to undertake changing the language of the statutes, that's the world we have to live in. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Joanne Messina is next, followed by Fred DeCaro. Thank you, Ms. Soblatnik. And Joanne Messina, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. I also want to compliment and thank both Ms. McCarthy and Ms. Alvarez for this wonderful presentation. Agree with the two former speakers. Also want to address directly Commissioner McRae. I think it's a good thing to have curb cuts both by the town and by private residents reviewed. And I understand that planning and zoning has a very heavy workload, but I think it's a good thing to have another set of eyes on a scenic road for curb cuts. So I think that only enhances the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Messina. Since you were head of the Tree Conservancy, and I know Ms. Alvarez was as well, your view on the trees that would be protected? And I mean, if you have a sense of what's in the right of way and, and kind of the value of those trees?
I think they speak for themselves. I think the presentation was well said. I think the trees are formidable. It's a part of town that has a wonderful tree canopy and something that we cherish in the town and something that we've been working to preserve in tree canopy. And unfortunately, other areas of town like our western area of town doesn't have that old, important tree canopy. So I think yes, that's, that's a very key part of this.
Okay, thank you. Mr. DeCaro, if you would go ahead, followed it, the last speaker will be Diane Fox.
Sure, thank you very much.
Hello. Thank you for coming.
So I'm gonna, I, I always hesitate to disagree with my friend Sam Romeo.
I know you can be scary, right?
Yeah, well, no, 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 he's a very good friend. I consider, I consider my, my, my godfather and he considers me the, the same. And I won't go into my own heritage in North Myanis, which I would venture to say, although I'm not as old as Mr. Romeo, competes from a surname standpoint. I, I just want to focus on, I would not be here today if I had not asked a few questions that simply, I still remain confused as to whether or not this is an honorary designation. Now, I, I, I came in late to the call, I will review it. But there were two key pieces related to the collection of these signatures. Okay, the, the statement that this is an honorary title and that Palmer Hill property owners are not restricted in any capacity. From what I did hear in the last 27 minutes, there are additional restrictions.
Yes, but they, but they are contained in the letter. Did you hear me say that?
They're, they're contained in the letter. I, I'm looking.
That went to the, yes, okay, so it says, so in the letter, it's very clear that private properties or private property rights aren't restricted. That the issue then is, should the applicants have explained very clearly that if you're going to move your, if you do anything that impacts the right of way, you would have to go to P N Z. You always have to get a D P W and a highway permit from D P W if you're going to move a curb cut in a driveway. But now, if you want to move your driveway, you would also have to talk to P N Z. And that's the difference. And should the applicant have made that clear? And that's what Nick was asking.
Right. And so Madam Chair, there's a bold faced statement. Palmer Hill Road property owners are not restricted in any capacity by this designation. That's a yes or a no?
Well, and I believe they are accurate.
So that's, so the answer is yes, because if that's yes, I can hang up and I can go my merry way.
Well, here's the thing. Your property is not restricted, but if you're going to work in the public right of way, you are restricted, but that was never your property. It's a, you know, the thing is, Mr. DeCaro, that's a very fine line. And I see next point of, hey, should you have explained it to people?
So there's a. And, and one of the things that I asked was, because again, I plan, like this is, at this point, what this is going to be is I need to contact other people. And I believe there'll be some withdrawals in that frontage when this is explained.
If you want to move your driveway. Okay, so that's a, that's a valuable perspective for us.
So, but what I, what I really was looking for here is, and what I asked is if it was possible for the commission to direct the town planner to create a small informational document that explains to folks what exactly is happening.
It's a very good idea. Patrick, would you be willing to do that?
Yeah, happy to.
So that's a very good idea, Mr. DeCaro, because I was thinking of how to accomplish, how to address this concern that's being raised. Because our first obligation is to always be transparent with residents, fully transparent. That's our job. So how do we address this? If we were to say, hey, just to let you know that you've endorsed this, and at present, if you want to relocate your driveway, you have to do this and this. And in the future, you would have to do this, just so you understand. So because the question that Nick has raised, that Nick raised originally was, he wasn't clear people got that, and you're not clear people get that.
A hundred percent. And, and this, and this document would have value not just for this project, but it would have value for all scenic road applications in the future.
Well.
Educational matter.
Yes, and now you're putting this into, there is, by the way, another thing I researched over the weekend was there's a ton of information on the town website, if you want to go look at it on scenic roads. So if you're a resident and you're wondering, it's all out there. We have it on the town website, but most residents don't do that. So to your point, we should reach out.
Now, yes, but also I did, I did read it. And there are, you know, and I'm still, I'm here because I'm still confused. And I'm still looking, you mentioned before the concept that, well, P N Z may be able to handle things administratively. But there's another section of that ordinance that has a chow in it with the department, with the, right, so there's going to be a hearing.
No, so not, yeah, that was the thing that we've, we did do that with Benny, so we're assuming yes.
Okay, so again, these are other things. People need to know, they're going to make changes or they're going to request changes. And now a public hearing regarding their alteration. And as I mentioned, no one comes to a public hearing without having engaged professionals to help represent them.
Oh, they do. You'd be surprised how many people come. You would be surprised how, because you know we're warm and fuzzy, you know that.
I, I do appreciate, I'm not gonna, I don't think I need to.
Last thing, your letter, your letter raised another question, which is this thing of you couldn't match up the distances. As I understand, from the total frontage, you have to deduct the, the intersections because that's not frontage. And that was the difference. That's what I gathered from reading the material. And that addresses the other point in your letter.
Okay, I, 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 my, my piece is generally about whether or not people understood what they signed. The rest of the stuff is, you know, around that, that's what I'm focused on. So if there is something from Mr. Leroux and I can help educate the property owners, and if they are all willing to hold and stick with their signature, by all means.
Yeah, I think transparency is, and just be really clear. So we'll have to figure out how to do that. Mr. Leroux would review that letter with Ms. McCarthy and, and Ms. Alvarez, and hopefully we could get it done quickly and just say, and, and you guys help us do that. But transparency is important. If people are concerned that it's not clear, then we should just make sure it is. Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. DeCaro. Our next, our last speaker is Diane Fox, and I'm promising dinner very soon.
Ladies and gentlemen of the evening, and it's been very interesting to listen to everyone. I'm speaking on behalf of the Preservation Network. We did take good time to review the applications and also worked with the applicants in terms of what would be necessary to look at and to present in terms of information. I think they've done a terrific job. It was a lot of work and a long, long process for them. So I commend them on that. I, I would point out that in our letter that was sent to you on July 17th, the key thing from our Preservation Network, as stated, says, we find that this application will preserve and protect significant features and character of a unique and historic road in Greenwich. And I think we heard tonight about the history and why this is a unique area to be preserved. There's something else that I would like to point out too, and I know this has been the focus of discussion about the extra work that will be necessary for a homeowner to get a curb cut. The letter states, the scenic road designation does not preclude upgrades to public safety standards and road improvements. It does add an added lava all of a review to make sure that the characteristics of the area are not compromised any more than necessary, that the proposed changes have well been thought out, and that prudent alternatives have been considered prior to making significant changes. This is not unlike the added protection afforded to our natural resources by the Wetlands and Conservation Commission and our historic resources by the Historic District Commission. So we've had, we would say precedence, where not just because the cutting of a wall to get a driveway, but reviews on historic properties are part of this in terms of any review, even for development purposes, as you had earlier this evening. You have a wetlands review, you may have conservation review when there are conservation. So yes, there are added layers of protection. And this is one of the added layers to have P N Z reviewing. And that has not been a problem. Obviously, you went through this with Burying Hill recently. So it doesn't get to be a problem. And D P W, as was pointed out by Sam Romeo, takes a while to get their ducks lined up and get money for a project. So there would be adequate time to have that reviewed by planning and zoning. So we really urge you to consider this as a very unique scenic road, and I ask the commission to approve it. Any questions?
Yeah, I think just Ms. Fox, as you know, what the problem always is with preservation is that it, it adds work. And it adds hassle. So it's the same reason we had to sweeten the H O. Because, and we sweetened it way beyond comfort for the commission. I can tell you that we don't like how much the H O gives. And yet, people don't always do historic preservation. So the issue is you're adding a layer and at the, and you're adding, you're, people don't want it. D P W says now, I gotta go listen to the Planning and Zoning Commission and they always want everything to be pretty. You know, you remember Amy used to tease me about that. So that's the trade off. And for all of you to consider, that's always the trade off. However, we do have this in our P O C D as a specific objective to add scenic roads. All right, that's it for our speakers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so where we are now, Ms. Alvarez and Ms. McCarthy, is because of the concern raised that people may not understand that they're, you're accurate in your letter, their private property rights are not affected. But that when they want to work in a right of way, they are affected. I don't know the best way of addressing that because honestly, when I get a lot of, there's a lot of mail that I'm like, yeah, whatever. If I get it, does this mean we have to send something out certified?
Again, you're asking? No, I know, I think, I think the notice of, of the meeting.
No, no, no. If, if we want to send out information, as Mr. DeCaro suggested, on what does it mean for you to have the scenic road designation if you want to change your driveway? How do we reach people?
I, I think it has to be through the internet and the web because I don't think, as much as people appreciate getting a letter, I think the return rate on that is less than the hits on the internet and we can, we could certainly work with them.
Do we have the email addresses for all the, for everybody who? I think we have to send them to their hard street address.
Well, if you're, I'm sorry, I think you're, I'm answering maybe two different questions. So if you're asking about the general public, that was my spot. If you're asking about the members of, of the residents of the town who may be affected by that, we would have to do that targeted email, targeting mailing, excuse me.
Right. And that's what I was asking you, because what I'm hearing Nick say is do people understand, and Mr. DeCaro echoed it, do people understand that if they want to move their driveway? Nick, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I, I maybe, maybe misheard this, but I thought Mr. DeCaro was going to take it upon himself to reach out to people. That's what I understood he was going to do. And that's why he wanted the, the explano thing.
I don't think he, he was, I mean, he said if, if one did kind of thing, but he was, he said, I then turned to Patrick and I said, would the town planner be able to do it? So yes, he meant for us. Did everybody hear the same thing?
Yeah, well, and I think the, the letter, if there is something that's going to be provided in representing the, what the regulation does and doesn't do, it should come from town departments and not from the proposer or from, you know, possible proponents, opponents, I should say, to it elsewhere. I think it needs to be sort of distilled and just matter of fact and not.
And it's also inappropriate for the voter, for the registrar of voters to be sending out an email regarding a scenic road. It's just like, mm-mm, that's our job. So we wouldn't do that. I mean, he's the registrar of voters. It's not for the Republicans.
I think he has the right to act as a resident in, in some capacity, but it's, you know.
But he can't represent us providing information regarding a designation.
Oh, yeah, well. No, I'm, I'm saying, interestingly enough, there is some things that get mailed out, like, you know, absentee ballots or whatever, that have other department stuff in it, like parks and rec and things like that. So.
But it's issued by the department and it goes into the mail out. Okay, it's the same thing when I get my tax bill, I get the stuff about, you know, renew your, your dump permit. It's got, it's done by D P W. So it's got to be done by the department with the authority. And that's us. Okay, so that's the first thing. I don't, do you guys just want to talk to Patrick about how you would do this?
I would like to do that. I would like to actually talk about actually what's in the, what's in the letter going out, because to make sure it's very clear and transparent.
Well, I think, I believe that it would be difficult for you to be involved in it since you would be, you are currently, it's currently an open application before us, which you cannot discuss outside of a public hearing. So we would have to delegate to Patrick, who is good at speaking English, and make sure that he, we can't be engaged. What I was saying is, I was meant Francia and Ms. McCarthy.
Well, I think, Madam Chair, I think this is to talk about what, what the scenic road regulation does, not so much what the applicant.
But it's, you're going to write about that open application that's before us, Patrick. You're going to write the Palmer Hill people about what they have just agreed to do.
Okay.
I just, I, I think we've got to be very careful not to cross the line here. And the line is, it's an open application before the commission. We should not be influencing its outcome behind the scenes.
Well, that, that's why I wouldn't recommend talking about the specific application. I think it's good to have a document that can live on for other possible discussions that says, what is a scenic road? What does it do? What does it not do? You know, a Q and A or an F A Q.
Okay, now, before we leave this topic, could you throw up the section of the letter that we're talking about so everybody else on the commission can see it? Because Nick and I have read it out loud. Has everybody seen this letter at this point and why there's a question? I know Mary has. Mary, what don't you read? Can you share that, Patrick? I had asked you before.
Yeah, let me find it. Yep.
It's in a bunch of places, but I just want everybody to read the wording in the letter.
We could probably go back and, and do this and study it. If those of us who have not read it.
No, but if you want to do that, we have to have another public meeting. If you want to discuss how you want the letter changed, you could just email Patrick individually. But if you want to reach consensus with all of us, you got to have a public meeting. So can we just quickly look at it while we're together and on the topic? I know you're hungry. I'll give you the time, I promise. Patrick, no luck? I can, I can get to it.
I, I think I need help as to which letter you're looking for.
It's a letter that is, says, dear neighbor, via certificate of mail dated April 29th, 2024. via certificate of mail dated April 29th, 2024. It's in the affidavit of notification.
Page 38 of the staff report.
Well, that doesn't help any, well, okay, for those of you who do that. So if you look at Jackie's affidavit of notification, that's where it is, among other, many other places, but that's where I pulled it up. Hold on.
I'm looking at it. Thank you, Nick.
You're looking at it?
Yeah, it's page 38 of the staff report, as Nick said.
Yeah.
On which is attached to the agenda.
Right. Got it, Patrick?
Yep, just loading it.
All right. Okay, let's just look at it quickly. Two minutes, guys.
I'm sorry, 34 of the agenda?
Page 38.
Oh, 38, sorry, I.
You need food too.
Apparently when I'm hungry, I go deaf.
Well, I get cranky, so, so does, so does Lo, right? Cranky.
No, thank you.
All right. Okay, so we're writing to notify you that we've done the scenic road. The application requires written notice. Please sign the attached. The next paragraph talks about the history. The paragraph that is bothering Mr. DeCaro and Mr. McRae that they, that they raise the issues on is this designation is an honorary title. Is that accurate? The second one is, here's the preamble in the charter, ignore that, and then drop down to the very last bolded section, which says Palmer Hill Road property owners are not restricted in any capacity by this designation and read that paragraph.
Well, the paragraph below that bolded is, is the language in the, in the statute and the regulation, so.
Right.
Yes. Article three, section 11 dash nine.
Yes, we know that. So the question is, okay, folks, that, yes, everybody can read that it says that right there.
Right, what's missing is 11 dash 13 C1, which basically says that any public or private applicant shall be submitted initially to the P and Z commission along with map, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So to me, as I said before, it seemed a little deceiving.
No, because that may be deceiving. I'm not sure that that's, okay. I'm not sure that you need to clarify. Most people have no clue how to go about getting a highway permit anyway. So if you then tell them it has to go to the commission, you haven't spoken to them in English. It has to be in English. But I think if Patrick summarized what's in the process, should you want to do a highway? Should you want to do a curb cut? Here's what happens to you. So everybody good with that?
Well, I mean, not to, oh, now I lost everybody.
You sure did. And you killed us.
Yeah, well, I don't want to belabor it because we're.
No, let's not belabor it. But the bottom line is everybody's seeing what Nick is questioning, what has been questioned. And I'm not going to keep saying Nick's name. Honorary title does not affect you. And then goes to the language. What I'm suggesting right now is that the, is that the statutory language that on getting a high, getting a curb cut be clarified and put into English rather than quote the charter. Mary.
Yeah, the words that trouble me, and now that I've looked at it again, it does not restrict in any capacity. That's not strictly speaking accurate.
So what, and it doesn't, yeah. It doesn't restrict.
This is a matter of semantics. It depends how you define in any capacity. If somebody, if, if somebody lived on a scenic road and wanted to rearrange their entry onto that road via the driveway, that person, I believe what this is saying, could do it. It might take longer. You may have to go through another level of approval or something. But at the end of the day, that person could do it. I, I mean, there, I think they're trying to be, the language is generous there.
But, but Peter, I think the problem is we're all working from a knowledge base that somebody may not have. So if you say it's not going to restrict you in any capacity, that's, that may be true in, in any additional capacity that wouldn't apply to you anyway if you wanted to change your curb cut. But someone reading it without the background of what you would be required to do for a curb cut in any case is going, well, I'm not restricted from doing that by this scenic road thing. So it's, it's a clarification for people who don't understand now.
Well, I understand, I, I think we're entering into a bit of a rastness here to try.
Okay, so we're done. I think we're done. The solution is take what you have to do, what the charter says you have to do and what Patrick knows about the application process for, for a curb cut and put it into English and show it to Tracy, show it to Ms. Alvarez, show it to Ms. McCarthy and, and mail it out to the neighbors and we're done.
Is it peculiar to, just to a curb cut?
Yeah, basically, yeah, it's, no, it's, it's peculiar to any time you want to do work in the public right of way. And that's basically for a homeowner's curb cuts.
Focus on a curb cut.
Yeah, you could clarify it. Okay, Patrick, so you say, if you ever wish to do work which affects the public right of way, you would need to, in addition to contacting DPW for a permit, you would also need to, this application would need to be submitted to P and Z. It's like four sentences and you're done.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. And the sooner we get that out, the more you, quicker you guys come back. Because I assume nobody wants to close. I mean, I'll just pull you guys.
I do, do you not want to close? There's too much to kind of fix up here.
There's only one thing, Nick. I mean, I, I know that, I mean, I know you're struggling with the DPW and, and them having to go through the extra step. But I think that's about scenic roads in general. And we have to separate that from this application. Because if we want to not do scenic roads, we have to modify the charter and our P O C D.
Okay, so if we close tonight?
No, I mean, we don't, I mean, we'll get the letter out. I'm assuming that everybody would rather get that information out and be transparent. Is that correct?
Yeah, Mr. DeCaro worries some people may change their mind based on what they get.
If we're, if, if we're going to clarify the so-called downside or the confusion over the language here, that is, that is essentially introducing a negative impact in, into the, the, a designation for a scenic road. Then we then, do you then have to counterbalance that with what the benefits are and articulate what those are specifically?
Well, you can send the whole letter out. I don't know. Pat, why don't Francia and Ms. McCarthy, Ms. Alvarez and Ms. McCarthy, you decide that with Patrick as the applicants?
Mr. Lo, I, I am concerned about getting too embellished with it. I, I would like to say it in a matter of fact way. If people interpret that as being a negative, so be it. But, you know, having to come to P and Z or having to get a permit. But it, there's, I don't, my intention would not be.
You're right, I, I, I understand what you're saying. And I don't disagree, but I, I worry that we, that we are tipping the scales a little bit here. But go ahead.
Well, I, I have the same concern because honestly, I don't think anybody told any other resident on any other scenic road as much detail as we're giving these people. But we live in that era now. I think when we did the others, we can look, but I think it was a simpler, one of the things to do. Francia, the notification that went out on Benny, the notification that went out on the other five scenic roads, let's review that and make sure we've been consistent with all the scenic roads in town. That would answer the question. Before we go out and tell this group of people, oh, by the way, this may be a whole lot of trouble. Have we ever said that to anybody before?
Not that I know.
Well, let's check. So we should be able to get from the town clerk because it's a certification. There's a certification of mailing. She should have in her records, the mail, the notice to neighbors of all the previous scenic roads. And what we should do is line up with those.
Do you remember what year we did that?
We should have them too, so.
It's 23 for Benny. I think it was, no, no, I've got that wrong. 2018, 2018, 2019 for Benny, right, Francia?
Yeah.
Okay, what were the other ones? Do you have it written down when the other ones became scenic?
The other ones, it's been almost 30 years.
Okay, so we'll go back and we'll look at it. I don't mind, Mary.
They're just, Madam Chair, the Zilsk, Sizka algorithm. If, just because we've done it that way before, if we can do it better, we should not.
I agree. I mean, listen, if someone asked you, if someone has said to us, you are not transparent, it's enough reason for us to make an effort. Okay, so we're going to.
To get an understanding of what has happened in the past, period.
Right, and we'll get an understanding of what we've done in the past. And Patrick's right, make it very simple, three sentences. And it says, so you know, if the scenic road is approved, and I, I'm sorry, I know we're making a lot more work for you guys, but I think it's the only, given the concerns that have been addressed in the public hearing, we have to do this. Okay, so it doesn't look like we've got an appetite to move forward till we've done this. So we will continue this application and we will go eat.
You got it.
It is 8:03. I'm gonna give you guys an extra two minutes for being good.
On top of the original five or what?
Or do you want to just reconvene at 8:30?
Whatever you want.
Yes.
8:30, okay, Mary wants 8:30 and she's on Alaskan time. Okay. Bye.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Okay, are we ready for number 11? No, number nine. We got an applicant. Mr. Hegney, I will let him in. And Mr. Ridberg. All right, Mr. Hegney, I assume you want to be accompanied by Mr. Ridberg?
I do, I do, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, you never know, you want to hang out with architects.
And I, I have Matt Pop there too, but I just left him at the A R C meeting.
A R C, I know, we had.
For 21 Glenville Street, so Rudy and I will have to carry on.
Yeah, we were, we were chuckling on Monday that you guys are doing the dance.
I, I told them I'd be back to them at some point, but it wouldn't be anytime.
Well, we can go quickly. The answer's no.
That sounds great to me.
All right, let me just be formal. Our next application is number 99 Glenville Street LLC for a final site plan and special permit to demolish the existing garage and dwelling and to construct a 17,731 square foot, three-story multifamily residential building. And this building will have five one-bedroom apartments and eight two-bedroom apartments with two of those apartments designated as moderate income dwelling units. The parcel itself is a total of 23,746 square feet. And this is at 9 Glenville. And with that, Mr. Hegney, if you would proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant. You did see this last year as part of a preliminary application together with a modification to the regulations that would permit, under certain circumstances, residential use on the ground floor in the L B R two zone. We presented to you a building last time that had retail on the first floor. There was concern about how that, the traffic associated with the retail would impact Angeles Drive and the intersection with Glenville Street. And as part of the guidance we received from you on the, on the preliminary, we have returned with, as the chair indicated, 13 residential units, all residential building, five that are one bedroom and eight that are a two bedroom. The traffic report has been amended to include times when the school was in session versus not in session. We received a waiver from the Public Works Department for the distance between the, the two driveways servicing the, the property on Angeles Drive. And plan has been designed here to meet the height requirement at the 40 feet where 38 feet 10 inches, the building footprint, lot, area coverage setbacks and the floor area limitation in the six dash 110 zone where we are providing for two moderate income dwelling units, one one bedroom and one two bedroom. The zoning enforcement officer has reviewed it and has no issues. A DPW has actually issued a memo saying that it's okay for a building permit. Oh, I know there was a good discussion yesterday about the parking. We're providing.
There was an earlier discussion that we should start with, which is.
Yeah, the, the rock removal.
And I was going to. Actually, I, I would go back another step and open with the first comment that Mr. Lo made at the briefing yesterday. There I go quoting you again, Mr. Lo.
Go ahead, go for it.
And which was that we gave you a list of items on the preliminary and you did not seem to have responded to those. And we were very frustrated by that because we give feedback on the preliminary. We expect to see it addressed on final. And there were the items about which the commission cared greatly, which had not been addressed. Mr. Lo, did I say that well?
It's great.
Okay, he pays me for this. So that was to start there with the list that we gave you and the reasons for which some things were not addressed. And then we can go to parking, the, the removal of the ledge and whatever you think is. But I'd like to go right to the decision letter and go with, why do we send it if this stuff doesn't come back in? And in your narrative, you don't address why you haven't paid attention to us.
Right, so the decision letter on page four says, prior to submission of the final site plan and special permit application, the applicant shall, colon, submit a revised traffic study which addresses identified concerns and proposes mitigation strategies for the degradation of level of service at Angeles Drive and addresses all comments of DPW engineering, traffic and beta. We did have that prepared by Bernie Adler, our traffic engineer, and that was part of our submission. Submit all necessary waivers from town standards required by DPW commissioner. That's relating to the driveway separation. We did obtain that from the Commissioner of Public Works. And we have submitted that with the application. Coordinate with DPW senior civil engineer regarding work that may overlap the C M A Q Glenville Road Corridor Project. That project, as, as everyone knows, has, has been delayed. On this part of Glenville Street, there are no proposed changes that are affecting what we are proposing to construct on this site. Consider submitting a final site plan application for an all residential building. Commission desires a lower impact development, a reduction in the mass of the structure as perceived from the street, reduction in traffic impact, development of generally more harmonious with existing as-built environment in the neighborhood and the historic district. So the building now is all residential. Rudy has taken the comments to heart and has prepared elevations and this design of the building that works well with the neighborhood. Submit a narrative that addresses the criteria for a waiver of the prohibition of ground floor residential units according to section 6 dash 110 of the Building Zone Regulations. Our narrative does in, in fact, address that. B discusses options and feasibility for reducing the amount of rock ledge to be removed for the project and discusses alternatives. That is the one that came up as part of the discussion yesterday. And then I, I'll, I'll go through the rest of this and then I get back to that.
It'd be great, actually, if you would get to that right now. It'd be great, actually, if you would get to that right now.
Okay, so now we've just-
Mr. Lowe.
Okay.
So, so we have requirement of twenty-five parking spaces, as is indicated on the staff report. And we're providing thirty-four, so we're providing nine more parking spaces. And the thought behind that is to provide more than adequate parking on-site. So there will be no parking on Angeles Drive, that we have more than adequate availability for visitors to park on the site along with the residents themselves. And that way, one of the big concerns that was expressed by members of the neighborhood are that they don't want parking on Angeles Drive. It's a problem now, and they want that addressed. So that's why we are including those nine additional parking spaces on-site to make sure that we have more than adequate parking available for anyone who's visiting the site, as well as the owners or the tenants in the building.
Mr. Lowe?
That's why we're retaining that parking.
Mr. Lowe?
Great. I may be a little bit daft, but we've been looking at this application for some time over a period of more than a year. And it's my recollection, I can't verify this, but almost, I think, every time we've, this has come before us, the commission generally as a whole or individually, the members have expressed concern about the removal of forty feet of ledge and thirty-odd mature trees. And I could have missed it, but I don't hear a response. Yesterday, we talked about, this is what we want to hear about upfront. And with all due respect, Mr. Hegney, you just ran through a litany of what was in a letter that, you know, da-da-da-da-da, but I haven't heard why we're not, you know, did you think about alternatives? Is this the only way to go? Why are we ignoring the concerns over the amount of ledge and the destruction of these trees?
In order to provide the parking that we believe is necessary for the site, rock has to come out and the trees have to come out. That's that we're proposing a landscape plan.
Glad you're saying that, but it's as if, I feel like it's as if this is sort of, we're just ignore it, ignore these concerns and sweeping under the rug. Sorry, go ahead. I know I interrupted.
So we have a landscape plan that has replacement trees, shrubbery. It's extensive. We've reviewed it also with the tree warden in terms of the street trees along Glenville Street. By eliminating the retail, we are able to provide much more landscaping along Glenville Street itself. And with the additional parking spaces, as I said, we're providing what we believe will be adequate parking on the site.
How would you, how would you evaluate the deleterious impact of removing all that ledge and those trees? Talking about putting trees on the street front is great, but what's behind it? How would you evaluate that? And how have you evaluated that in the context of what you're proposing?
Sure. We look at it from a drainage standpoint. And that's, we had Mr. DeAndrea prepare a drainage summary report and a development plan to show how the rock would be removed and what the degrading would be as a result, and how that would be dealt with. And that's what we submitted to the town engineer. So I see the comments from Conservation. But I now have a report and an indication from the town engineer who does have the credentials to look at drainage and run off, that he is satisfied and finds the drainage summary report acceptable.
But the director-
You don't, you don't see, or do you? I won't put words in your mouth. But do you see any negative impact associated with this removal of this much ledge? Do, are you acknowledging zero negative impact?
When you remove ledge, obviously, there's noise and disruption that occurs. That occurs pretty much on every site, because we have a lot of rock in town. And to just identify this site as one where you can't remove the rock when it's a particular issue to provide the parking, I don't find this appropriate.
Okay, so have you, have you come across and represented proposals to remove this much rock on a regular basis? Is this a routine exercise? Is absolutely routine?
I don't know if Mr. DeAndrea is available to join us, but with many projects, it's this much rock or much more.
Well, you know, this is what we keep, Peter, I just want to jump into this.
Please jump in before I-
I'm just gonna, no, one of the things that we need, that we've addressed, that we've been talking about for a while, is the amount of cut-and-fill and disturbance of a property are not addressed within the regulations in any way sufficiently to put a hard stop line. And we've got new stuff from the state that would enable us to be a bit stricter. We've got guidance from WestCog that we could be stricter. And at this point, we are doing it on special permits, but we need to go wider. Because we could almost leave, Mr. Hegney's gonna love this, but we were talking about this the other day. We could almost leave the one hundred and fifty thousand cube houses alone and address the site disturbance, the property disturbance, and the lack of respect, because that's really what bothers us. You can have a big house, but be sustainable about it. So I'm just saying, yes, they've become, everybody's habituated to damaging, to being very aggressive with the existing geology. I mean, I don't think Mr. Ridberg's gonna disagree either. It's been a matter of custom that you can mold the planet to fit what you want it to be. So you want to put a building there, you just like get, and we're seeing that as not being a sustainable practice in the long term. So just throwing it in there for our long-term planning.
Oh, so three years ago, after eighteen-month moratorium, you revised the regulations for the LBR two zone. And we are meeting all of the zoning criteria, the height, building coverage, lot coverage, setbacks, FAR, that was in that regulation that was adopted in twenty twenty-one.
But we're objecting to the special permit.
And to say, yeah, but there has to be some guideline. It can't be, and we don't like it.
Well, we got really good guidelines. No, Mr. Hegney. The guideline is, we just heard from Conservation, so that's not fair to us. Conservation has said from day one, we are concerned about this and we don't like it. And we keep giving you the feedback, that's a perfectly good guideline. You know what Conservation's gonna object to.
There is, there unfortunately, that is their opinion, but there is no standard to apply-
Yeah, I got it.
For their recommendation. The standards that we apply are those in the zoning regulations themselves. And we meet those standards. Now, if you want to have greater green space or less coverage on a site, that requires a change in the zoning regulations themselves. That is not something that can be done on a site-by-site basis, because there may be more trees or rock to remove.
Do you want me to read you the special permit standards about respecting the natural topography and all of that? I mean, I know you know what's in them, but that's what we're leaning on here. We're on special permit. Can I go to Mr. Hag, to Mr. McRae before we duke it out?
Sure.
All right, Mr. McRae, no punching. You're muted. You're muted. Probably.
Mr. Hegney, it was my clear understanding that the reason why we went to all-residential on this, so we could actually reduce the amount of parking to reduce the wall.
Yep.
If I'm looking at this correctly through the staff report, as proposed, there's thirty-six spaces. The required is twenty-six, so that's, if I do the math right, ten less spaces are required. As I look at the landscape plan and then double-check it against the construction plan, that back line is about ten spaces. The back line against the wall. And I'd like to understand, I want to make sure that I'm reading this correctly, because it's a little fuzzy to me. If Mr. DeAndrea is around, in the back corner, if I've done the calculation correctly, let me just double-check. The back corner of the wall would be from existing grade to pre, at one seventy-one down to proposed grade of a hundred, thirty-four feet, five, thirty-four point five feet. So I think actually getting back and just talking about that as well. Mr. Hegney, I can't seem to find the plan, but how many, how many spaces are actually in the garage underneath the building?
So there are eleven spaces in the garage. And we're at twenty-three service, surface spaces. It's, we have thirty-four required, we have thirty-four regular parking spaces, two handicap spaces, twenty-five spaces are required under the six-one-ten computation for for parking.
Right, twenty-five plus-
Bedroom count.
Right, twenty-five plus one ADA, that's right there in the cover of their staff report. Okay.
Right, right.
So that's just kind of laying out the information. It was like, okay, we asked about parking because we're going to go to residential. Maybe I misunderstood this, because it was a long time ago, but I think it was like, okay, so if we go to all-residential, we can reduce the parking. There's a new design that's in front of us today. Is that the design that HTC had a pine on, or is this something new?
That, that's something new. We're going to HTC next Wednesday.
Very good, thank you. Okay, I think actually that's the biggest question. I don't know if anybody else remembers having that discussion way back when. Going with all-residential, reduce parking, reduce parking eliminates the wall.
Yes, but the question maybe that Mr. Hegney could answer is, why hasn't that parking been reduced? If we're, if Mr. McRae is reading these plans correctly, no reason to think he isn't, but maybe you could explain.
And before-
Reading the, he's reading the plans correctly. And we believe that this is the required parking in order to avoid any on-street parking on Angeles Drive.
So, there already is on-street parking on the opposite side. There's a sign there at the property that says, no parking here to corner, or something like that. Let me double-check it. No parking this side of street. So it's only on one side of the street, and there are people parked there. So the question is, or the statement, I guess, would be that you don't want your people or the people in the development to park on the street or across the street. That was the premise of actually leaving the spaces. Is that correct, Mr. Hegney?
Correct, correct, Mr. McRae. Okay.
The way that the discussion went during the preliminary was we, we said, if we went to all-residential, it would satisfy the neighbor objections. That was the first thing, that it would fit better into the historic and all of that, and more with the consistent with the land, with the town development plan, all of that. And then we talked to Mr. Ridberg, and he said, you know, the funny thing is, you only require one parking space per unit. If you do mixed use, and if you go to all-residential, then you have the higher parking requirement. So I don't know how much it's going to reduce the overall parking. And we said, we'll give it a shot, because we'd really like you to be able to reduce the ledge removal. So that's exactly the way the conversation went. And, and we talked about the trade-off with one per, one per unit and a mixed use. And then if you go to all-residential, not having that offset for the mixed use. Mr. Wells?
Yeah, I just had a question, maybe, maybe for Mr. Ridberg. Is there any room to put more cars under the building, or the size of the building just limits it to eleven? And, you know, we're not asking you to have a two-level parking garage under there. That would even be more disturbance, but is there any way to fit more cars under the building to address, you know, next point?
Thank you, Mr. Wells, Rudy Ridberg for the applicant. We have maxed out. I was hoping to get thirteen in there when we went to thirteen units, so everybody had one space inside. But the building is, is very tight inside, you know, with the dimensions that we need for the town parking regulation. So plus, we also have bike storage down there. We have storage units for the, for the apartments, for the tenants. And then we also have, you know, the preliminary, the first bit of some recycling down there, potential garbage down there as well, if they want to hold it for there for a while before it goes to the garbage pickup. Unfortunately, I can't squeeze anymore.
Thank you.
Mr. Wells and then Mr. Lowe again.
I'm done, sorry.
Okay, sorry. I didn't think, I'll take, I'll take your hand down. Mr. Lowe?
So, Mr. Ridberg, you just mentioned, well, we're tight down there. Is it possible to provide so-called storage above ground?
Well, if, if I could find the, open up the floor plan, you'll see that even if I read, the storage is in a spot where it's not going to gain us any more spaces. Can we open up, let me look on this sheet here, what you have, two hundred and, holy mackerel, two-
And my simplistic approach to this is, well, you know, maybe we could, we wouldn't have to remove as much ledge to provide for this storage, and we just put it above ground.
There we go. Whoever found that, great job. You can see right there that the, the way the core works, okay? And we've only brought one stair down in this building. When we went to all-residential, we had to add two stairs into the building. So we've, we've actually stayed with the existing size of the building and the footprint. And we've actually had to add it, when you get up to the upper floors, you'll see, we had to add a secondary stair. So if you look at that there, where the stair is the elevator core, I have no room to put another parking-
Rudy, I think you're the only one looking at it.
Screen share.
Did I do that on myself? Oh, my god.
Yeah, you, you found it, and you're like-
I complimented somebody when I should have complimented myself. Can I share the screen?
Yeah, can you let him share and then just?
Let's see if I can do that.
You lost me, as you can see.
Not lost yet, hello?
And we were like, yeah, and you lost us at, oh, this is what we told you in the preliminary, and here we are. So-
Okay, so how do, let me just ask you this. What did I do? I thought I hit share. What do I hit to get there?
Share.
I did, and it says, post-disabled participants, screen sharing.
Well, this is when you bring Patrick gifs.
Oh, boy, okay.
Patrick or Tracy, it's page two seventy-one of the staff report.
No, that's not the issue. He, Patrick-
Two seventy-one.
Patrick will enable Ridberg, because he gets enabled at the ARC.
So you should be able to share.
Yeah, we let the, we let the architects do it. We've never let Tom Hegney do it.
Oh, boy.
Well, no, we know, because Tom refuses.
What have I done wrong? I hit share and it's not letting me. So can we go to two seventy-one, Patrick?
It's not letting you.
Tracy, you got it open?
I hit share.
I can get it if you need it.
Then it shows you a second picture, and then you'll have to click on the one you're sharing.
Now it just did. Okay.
I have the presentation open.
No, she's ready. He's ready. He's got it. He didn't click on the second picture.
Now it did. Okay.
Yeah, he did, but you weren't looking.
See that plan?
No.
No.
It's on screen two. Why is it not there?
There you go. Somebody got it up. That was probably Tracy, who's smarter. Sorry, I didn't say that.
All right, so if you look at that plan, you can, can you see the red, my purple arrow that's running around here?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so two, two spaces are here. Behind this space is mechanical, 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 and storage, okay? This is our fifty-nine-foot dimension that we need, eighteen, twenty-three, eighteen, okay? Ten at the end, ten at the end, nine in between. You can see that in here. I don't have enough room. If I took the storage out, I can't get a car in there, because I don't even, I don't have forty-one feet to the elevator.
But you have two, you have two areas of storage, as I'm looking at this?
Well, because there's thirteen units.
No, no, I'm just asking.
Yeah, thirteen units. So this I can't get a car to anyway. This I can't, this I can't, because there's a stair, elevator, and a lobby. These are the only other areas that I can get fifty-nine feet in to squeeze the space, okay? Over here, I can get one in, because just so happens from this wall to this location is forty-one feet. So I've squeezed every piece in there. It was nice when we had to retail, because I had less residential. I had more than enough space.
So that, those, those lower six, uh, if you bring that cursor out, yeah, keep going to the left.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, those lower six look like they comprise two potential parking spaces. Do they?
No, but I don't have enough space from here to here. I don't have forty-one feet. You can see where there's the forty-one foot line right there. Eighteen, twenty-three is right there. If I bring that line across, I don't, I can't fit cars in here. Can't physically get a car in this unless I bring a swatch car in and you allow me to have less than twenty-three feet of backup.
But there's a, there are a lot of spaces along the bar.
Wait, we're not going to redesign this. This, we got Nick to tell us not to redesign something on Monday. We're not going to redesign this. We are going to give feedback to Mr. Ridberg. We are not the architects. And the feedback is, we, um, wanted him do it, we wanted them to address the preservation of features of the natural environment per six seventeen D. And we also expressed that we had some, we, that meant the ledge. We would like this to be less intensive, again, per six seventeen D. And we're very happy they're going to the HTC because I believe someone had a concern about what the building looks like. But if you're going to HTC, we're going to let you address that in the context of the historic district. Do we have other feedback for them?
Okay, fair enough.
I mean, I just don't think we should redesign it.
No, no, I was just trying to understand and I went down a hole. I, I
No, no, and it's very tempting. And this is, but the bottom line is
I got it.
This was, we're opening this early. It wasn't a must-open until ten-ten. We hopefully have a little time. And, um, we can just have them address the feedback and come back to us with whatever thoughts they have if they put on their thinking cap. And Marshall Carroll is a member of the public, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and Noel Jones, you have your hand up.
Yes, I do. So, um, the other, if we're looking at comments, also Beta had comments about looking at the pedestrian crossing volumes as well as anything that could be done to mitigate the backup that's going to happen along Glenville Road from Riversville, um, past Angeles during the morning and evening peak. Um, there were a couple of other comments, but those are, that were the key ones that they had.
So what we would like to do is to send you guys back with a feedback. Um, similar to what was said in the preliminary and just have you give it another good tug. Anybody else want to add things, um, to the feedback? Mr. McRae, I believe it was you that wanted to, that you, you're glad, you, I think you were glad that it was going back to HTC and you're good with that. Um, anybody else? All right, okay. Shall we go to public comment? Oh, can you drop the screen?
Okay.
Now that we've got you through sharing graduation of sharing school.
How's that?
That was important.
Does that work?
Yeah, that was good. I mean, you gotta, you know, when humans, when humans triumph, yes, Tom refuses, Mr. Hagney refuses. We've tried him a bunch of times and he's like, no, I don't want to do that. All right.
There's always someone who's better at it than I am.
But you know how it is, you only get better if you could, if you try. Now, uh, we have a member of the public who wants to speak. Does anybody else from the public wish to speak on nine Glenville? Please raise your virtual hand, nine Glenville. We do have a lot of letters in the file, so you might want to take a look at those, Mr. Hagney.
All right, Marshall. Staff did share those with me today and I appreciate that.
Um, Marshall Carroll, if you would speak.
Am I unmuted?
You are unmuted, sir. Go ahead.
Once again, I am just so impressed with the effort and diligence you all put in, which I think is on a tier basis.
Thank you.
Level of detail, I am impressed. I'm easily impressed, so.
So that you don't take away a compliment after you get, do it.
I wrote a letter to the commission and I want to amplify on that a bit, but first let me address some things in the proposal because I read through it, Mr. Hagney has, uh, written. Uh, his comments on the proposal was that, one, the property has been used for purely residential purposes for many years. And that's true, but look at the setback of the existing home. The principal problem I have with the impact of this project is that you're, you're proposing to put apartments where people on the street could look into living rooms and kitchens and bedrooms. Since, if, if you're really rethinking this thing, where you're not going to have commercial space there, where you really need store windows, there's no reason to put this building on the street. And considering some of the other comments that were made that I heard tonight, uh, about the removal of so much rock, et cetera. If you put a building, whatever building you want to put at the top of the ledge, okay, you would have terrific views from the apartments. You have to remove a lot less rock and you could build even two levels of parking deck out in front of it, much cheaper than what we're talking about building here. I mean, and you wouldn't need a driveway on Angeles Drive. You have plenty of space on, on Glenville Street for a driveway into, into the lot. Uh, I think would cost a heck of a lot less money to build. It would certainly be more in keeping with the look of the area. And I really find the, 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 okay, step back a second. My understanding is, is at the discretion of the PNC Commission, whether or not to permit of, of first level apartments.
Yes, that indeed is true.
Ask you to use your discretion to say no, you know, without some compelling reason.
Right, and what, yes, Mr. Carroll, so what our compelling reason was, was that we wanted a less intensive, less mass and less breakdown of the ledge and more respect for the existing geology. And we were trying, we thought if they did all residential, we would get something to fit in better into Glenville. So we've now sent them back with their thinking caps to see if they can get there.
Okay. They're still stuck with the idea of what the original footprint was with driveway on Angeles Drive, with driving under the building to get up to the parking because that's what was there. Well, I'm suggesting, okay, let's take a step back. They're, they're, you're kind of being grin-lit to build an apartment building, not a mixed-use building, but an apartment building on a lot in, in Glenville. I'm suggesting use the opportunity to propose something that would sit at the top of the ledge and put parking in front of it. Get rid of the, uh, people driving under the building to get the parking. Change, change what you're proposing to fit the opportunity that you have. You don't have to worry about retail anymore.
We're exercising maximum safe self-control to not tell the architect what to do because he's, you know, he's a professional. We've just told him what we want the end result. So I'm sure he heard you and he will consider your ideas. Anything else?
Yes. He said the area is not conducive for pedestrian traffic, although there are adjacent commercial uses. This is not true. There's now a lot of pedestrian traffic between the stores on Riversville, Glenville Road and Angeles Drive, especially now because of the new residents at the mill apartments. He said that area residents were opposed to traffic. You haven't heard about that, okay? Uh, ground floor dwelling units will not have an adverse impact on the retail continuity in the area. Well, I don't look in somebody's bedroom. Uh, ground floor dwelling units would be in keeping with other characteristics on the south side of Glenville Street, which has been converted from commercial to residential uses. Yeah, those apartments are behind the mansion. They're not on the street.
Yes, but Mr. Carroll, my house has a ground floor and people can look in my windows.
What's your setback? What is your setback?
But there, in the R six, the setbacks are not significant, for example. So I think we do have to, hey, you know, people can see in windows on ground floor. If we get something that otherwise is consistent with the historic character of Glenville, whether or not people have their windows looked into is the resident's choice. So I would let Mr., so Mr. Carroll, I've heard you, but I, we've given the important feedback to Mr. Ridberg. Not that you wouldn't want to live there. I'm sorry, sir, but whether or not you would live with someone looking in your windows is a personal matter. What we're trying to do is to get something that fits the neighborhood. And the idea, what we heard from other residents was that all residential would work better, so we're giving it a shot. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, um, so there's our feedback. That's the public comment. And what we'd like to do is have you come back whenever you're ready with some kind of new design and what you can do. Wait, this is no good when people raise their hands after we've stopped. Okay. Um, Lauren O'Keefe. Hello, Ms. O'Keefe, go ahead.
I know I sent you a letter and, and I, again, appreciate all the work you guys do because you are phenomenal. But it does not conform with the historic idea of the neighborhood. And the parking, like, I don't know why, if it's an address on Glenville Street, why the driveway would come out on Angeles Drive?
Yeah, so there's reasons, it's, it, it, there's some reasons.
But it's, but it's reasons that the developer insists on.
No, no, it's actually not. It's actually not. DPW, our Department of Public Works, actually prefers to have the driveway exit be on the more subsidiary of two roads.
So you have the more subsidiary with, of two roads. In addition, you have Angeles Drive coming out, you have
I know.
Have the
I know the problem with Angeles Drive. I'm just telling you it's in the guidelines. It's actually also in our subdivision regulations when you develop streets. And then it's also, I believe, in the DPW stuff because I was just reading it last night that somebody, that they choose to have it be on the more subsidiary road.
So is there
I realize is a problem because you're
Is there a limit?
No, because you're between a rock and a hard place, Glenville versus Angeles. Angeles has some problems, but Glenville would actually be worse, right?
So then is it then your job to choose to make it safer for whoever it may be safer for?
We try to figure out what's going to work best on the site plan. That's what they pay us the big bucks for. Yeah, we're trying to figure it out.
I, I know that you don't get paid and I respect everything you guys do and thank you.
That's the trade-off. Thank you, Ms. O'Keefe.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Bye-bye. I hope I read it in the DPW. I read it somewhere last night because I was looking at a whole bunch of stuff on, on driveways. Okay, I think we've now got all the public. Um, anybody want to add anything before we send them on? Ms. Jones?
All right. I just, I meant to add earlier about just the, the CMAC project. I know you said that it's not going to interfere with the, what's right in front of this, but it's going to be interfering with the whole sort of, from the sort of Stop and Shop shopping center all the way to Weaver Street. So I think some coordination, some discussion needs to take place with DPW about the timing of all of that and what because you certainly don't want to be doing this in the midst of all of that either.
Okay, anything else from anybody? All right, we look forward to seeing you. We wish you luck at HTC next week. And we'll see you, this application will be continued.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Rudy and I can now go back to the
I have fun. I know, I was trying to get you out of here and not have us like give you feedback forever. I tried to get it done. All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
All right. Okay, and who's representing, um, two twelve?
It's Tomah.
Oh, it's himself? Okay. Um, I don't, oh, no, it's Peter Finkbiner. Is that who's representing two twelve?
Not on the form, but.
Oh, no, here's Tomaj. Okay.
Think Mr. Finkbinder is a professional who did the drawings, but again.
Okay, well, we'll let Mr. Mr. Fidjukjevich decide when he comes in. Okay, there he is. Okay, so while you're unmuting, sir, our next application is number eleven. Tomaj Fidjukjevich for a final site plan and special permit to construct in addition to the attached garage and a new detached pool house, which would further exceed a hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet in volume. And this requires a special permit. The property is five point seven acres in the RA four and the address is two twelve Old Mill. Mr. Fidjukjevich, if you're ready, and do you want to have Mr. Finkbiner come into the meeting?
Of course. I mean, he was meant to make the presentation. I'm just attending.
Well, I didn't, we didn't know because you're the applicant. Um, all right, I, we will move him in. All right, I think Mr. Finkbiner, you're in and if you would unmute, you're ready to go. Wait, I've got two Finkbiners with their hand. One is in the meeting and the other one is, has his hand up. What's going on here? Mr. Peter Finkbiner, would you just explain to us?
It might be a technical glitch.
No, it's not a technical glitch. I'm looking at Peter Finkbiner in the meeting.
Well, they're both muted.
Peter may not be able to connect with his device. That's why I'm, I'm bringing Mr. Michael up. Michael or Peter, could one of you unmute?
No, Peter's fine, but he's muted. All right, Mr. Michael Finkbiner. Oh, you need to turn on more lights. You look like you're on stage. Okay, Mr. Finkbiner, you are presenting this application for Mr. Fidjukjevich. Oh, and Mr. Fidjukjevich, if you're going to be talking to someone else in the room, would you mute?
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Finkbiner, are you talking to us or are you just?
No, I've been driving for two and a half hours listening to you and I just arrived at my destination, so I still am in the car.
Okay, um, so what is, what is Peter Finkbiner doing?
Um, Peter is the engineer record for this. He did the calculations with regard.
But he's muted. I'm having a bad night here, but he's muted. He's muted. So you're speaking for him, I guess. Because Mr. Finkbiner, Mr. Peter Finkbiner isn't unmuting.
Here, let me put the car in park.
Why, why don't we let
Okay, I'll tell you what. Look, this application is Okay, I'll tell you what we're going to do. Mr. Finkbiner, we're going to skip you and we're going to come, no. No, no, no. No, Mr. Finkbiner.
I'm sorry, guys, uh, they haven't
Oh, so Mr. Fidjukjevich?
Yeah.
If you've got their phone numbers.
I do.
Okay, could you just call them? And here's the deal. Mr. Finkbiner, you're, is gonna, for some reason, his brother can't get into the meeting. He's muted and he's not unmuting. And what we're going to do is we're going to let Michael Finkbiner get inside his house, get comfortable, get ready to speak, and we're going to do two. And we're going to do two other applications first, okay?
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Don't worry, Mr. Fidjukjevich, we're going to call you again in about twenty minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye. I can't, I can't get, I can't get Michael out of the meeting. Patrick, can you try? All right, I, every now and then it just only lets you do it. I think it's because you take away my co-host all the time.
Love your ambitious, uh, twenty-minute, uh,
Oh, no, 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 it's not ambitious. All right, can you take Michael back out?
I'm trying, Madam Chair.
All right. All right, um, who's representing? It's, um, Mr. O'Connell?
He's, again, I don't, I don't believe he's coming to this meeting. Is that correct?
Okey-dokey. So we're going to let everybody walk into
Open, yeah.
Okay, all right. So we now have, our following application is one eighty-five South Water LLC for a final coastal site plan and special permit to construct a two-family dwelling and associated site improvements, including cross-seasements for parking, circulation and drainage on a fourteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-two square foot property located at one eighty-five South Water Street and the R six and, and coastal overlay zones. Um, this application is hereby opened. The applicant will return and speak on behalf of this application at a future meeting. We now go to application number thirteen. One ninety-five South Water Street LLC for a final coastal site plan and special permit to construct a two-family dwelling and associated site improvements, including cross-seasements for parking, circulation and drainage. I'm reading you all this to make it, make it go five minutes. And drainage on a seven thousand six hundred and forty-eight square foot property located at And drainage on a seven thousand six hundred and forty-eight square foot property located at one ninety-five South Water Street in the R six and coastal overlay zones. This application is now been opened. And it will be continued. Both of these applications will be continued at a future meeting. Okie dokie. Now. We now go back to number eleven and hopefully Mr. Finkbiner is in the house. So if not, we will go on. Peter Finkbiner has his hand up. Okay, try promoting Mr. Michael because it is not responding to be. And I'm gonna do Peter.
I believe I just promoted Tomaj and Peter and I'm not getting anything back here.
Yeah. No.
Okay. Okay.
All right, we got everybody in? No. All right, Mr. Finkbiner, we gave you time to get out of your car. Have you gotten out of your car?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I got out of my car and then I had to get back into. Back in, so.
I can't. You're breaking up. Can you turn off your video? Turn off your video, sir.
I, um.
Turn off, turn off your video. Turn off your video. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, how is that?
I feel like I'm. Okay, Mr. Finkbiner, please proceed.
Yes, I have. Um, this building, I was the surveyor.
Uh, I'll tell you what. Can you hear us? Okay?
For this, uh, review.
No.
I can hear you fine. So yes.
No, no, no.
Let me, let me, let me.
Mr. Fidjukjevic.
Yes, can I?
Neither neither one of your engineers can speak.
I understand. So let me try to.
Okay, I'll tell you what, Mr. Fidjukjevic. Can I just tell you what the questions we had and what we would like you to come back at? Because we need your engineers to talk to us. I can tell you what our key issue is.
Go ahead.
And then, okay, so you started building the house and then it got bigger, right?
No.
And that's.
So so well, okay, finish your sentences and.
Okay, so you weren't originally over a hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet. Uh, and then you realize you made some changes and now you're back to us to get that a hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet approved.
This is not the case. The house was approved. I purchased the house in a year ago. The house was approved and it was on the 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 construction was ongoing eh, without your approval for some reason. I don't know.
Oh, I can tell you why, because it was under a hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet.
No, no, it was I. What I'm trying to add to the approved and built house, it's about a thousand square feet.
Right, but that pushed you over the limit.
No, the it was pushed way over before.
Oh.
This was pushed way over before.
Okay, so Mr. Fidjukjevic, the first thing is we have to figure that out because we thought that when you added the thousand square feet, you then, you know, just that little bit took you to a category of house that we then review.
No.
So that is our first question and we've just lost. Okay, so Patrick, do you want to say something?
Yeah, uh, the issue, forget forgetting the organization or the steps of how it got here. This is a building. This is a change to a building that is going to be over cubic cubic volume that has not gotten approval from the commission.
So now you have to do that.
I'm trying. I'm trying to make this right right now.
Yeah, and we appreciate that. And so I just wanted to tell you what our questions are. Um, we're confused about right now. Okay, let me just mute him.
I got it. I got it.
Okay. Okay, so what our questions were, as we looked at this application is you when you got your wetlands permit, do they understand how big your building is?
Yes.
And did they approve that application for the over a hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet? And are they okay with it? Then the other thing is when you come into us with a hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet, we require that you give us a landscaping plan. You know, all the.
To the best of my belief.
We don't have it. And wetlands just said that they haven't seen, you know, the trees you're gonna put in. For some reason, the wetlands department couldn't give it to us either, and we are required to look at it.
I was told by Peter this this afternoon eh, that he did provide this plans, but like I'm.
Okay, so all I can tell you is, um, I'm not lying to you. They're not. Okay.
I understand.
And and, um, so that's.
Fine landscape plan, eh, what else are you missing?
So, um, so you just need to give us all the trees and the landscaping plan. Then we don't have the copy of your Loma.
That's the Loma is the.
The Loma is the change for your flood zone that you have. There's a Loma. Tracy and Patrick can send you the report. That was done.
Loma was provided to the wetland, so I know it's existed.
Okay, so I know it exists, but we nobody can find it.
Fine, no problem.
Other thing, again, going back to your original wetlands approval. They did they know that the septic disturbs part of the wetland?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we just need to make sure that we couldn't find that in the record, so we will look for that.
So I and I got in the meantime, between wetland and you guys, I do have my health department approval to install to finish the septic as well.
Then it it. So let me just keep going and Tracy and Patrick will send you this list. The or or actually, it was Jackie who worked on your application, so she can send it to you. Conservation is asking for the same information that we're asking you for. So somewhere some of the paperwork that Peter had supposed that the Finkbiners had sent us hasn't reached the departments. The, I think you're okay with wetlands. You've got you. I know you have the Department of Health's approval for your for your septic. The ZEO, so everybody's fine, except we need to make sure, uh, we need to have a copy of the Loma. We need to make sure understanding that wetlands is okay with where with the disturbance of the wetland for the septic. The tree replacement plan, the landscaping plan. And the last item, sir, is that you have some trees along the front of your property that actually may be in the town in land that town owns.
But as far as I know from Peter, we are in contact with them, the town, the tree warden, right? And he's waiting for your approval.
Well, no, we would not. We would not approve the removal of of those trees. It's the tree.
He's waiting for as planning and zoning approval that up. This application that we're talking about right now.
Yes.
Then he's gonna make his mind make up his mind.
It works the other. I know, but Mr. Fidjukjevic, just so you know, it works the other way around. We will not approve a tree removal until the tree warden has signed off on it. So we will talk to the tree warden and say to him on two twelve Old Mill, we want to know what you say. Because that's the law. The law is he goes first. So but we'll make sure we talk to him. That we can do for you. And that's it. That's your list.
Supposedly Peter is in touch with him, but that's that's.
Okay. Tracy and Patrick are listening to all this and they will make sure that they talk to the tree warden. And we'll make it easy because he has. He's closer to Saint Peter than we are.
I understand.
Nobody else laughed, just Mary. Okay. But the idea is he has more power than we do. If he says we can't remove it, we can't approve you removing a town tree. We can't. We can't do it. So our approval.
This is this is not a town tree. This is the tree, the little giants that I planted to cover the the property was exposed to the road and whatever.
I got you.
And I planned this to be like a year ago when after I bought.
Got it. So what happened?
I entered the town of Bright.
That exactly. And, um, don't worry, I've done the same thing without knowing it, but once you've done it, now you can't undo it.
Oh, then it's.
Once you're in the town property, then you have a problem. Okay, so, yeah, and a lot of people don't realize. Okay, so if you can just get those all those things back to us, then we could. We could get you done.
Sure, no problem. They all these things exist. And and as far as the the tree removal, eh, you know, within the property, I, you know, and the replacement trees, I got the 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 wetlands want me to start next week.
Great.
Because some of the replacement trees got.
We will not. So again, wetlands in the in the wetlands has greater power than we do. So if they if we just have what they approved, we have to respect that, but we haven't seen it.
Okay, fine. I will provide that to you.
And so whatever they want is more forceful. They have greater power under the state law. And basically, sir, all we want to see is that people take good care of the land, build the house, but take good care of the land and protect it for the future.
That's what I'm there for.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have any comments? Before I let Mr. Fidjukjevic, you're doing a great job, by the way, representing yourself. Go ahead. Anybody have comments?
No.
Okay, we have one person from the public who needs who wants to speak, so I'm gonna let him go ahead. Mr. Alexander. Mr. Alexander, did you want to speak? All right, okay, Mr. Alexander had his hand up, but he doesn't seem to want to speak, so I am going to remove him again. Okay, Mr. Fidjukjevic, I think you're all done. Sir, oh, I muted you. You'll have to unmute.
Thank you very much, and I'll talk to you next time.
So hopefully we'll have some room on our soon agenda. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And were you able to? Okay, we got him and you may have to do this. Okay. Alrighty. So.
Discussion item.
Mr. Alexander, I called on you and you um, weren't there. So, um, Mr. Bazili, Mr. Bazili can go home now?
Yes, I'll do that.
So endeth the public hearing. And mostly it's Mr. Bazili can go home now.
What happened to South Water? Did I miss that?
Yeah.
Opened, opened only.
Oh, got it. Thank you.
Yeah, we opened it. That was all we were supposed to do. So Dennis is laughing because you guys didn't think I was gonna move this along. All right.
You would do these two. It does. There's just no way. Just open and move. I got it.
Yeah, okay, so now we have Parker Eng. Is he representing six hundred East Putnam?
He is.
Alrighty, um, hello again. Okay. So, um, if you want to talk to us about the pre-application, um, let me just read it out so everybody remembers. This is six hundred East Putnam Avenue LLC. It is. It has been Mike's Organic, which it has been classified as a grocery retail. And the applicant is for us for a pre-application to change the use potentially to a restaurant and wants to talk to us about whether they could do that. Reminding everybody that this property was a restaurant in the past when it was it was originally built as an IHOP. Then it became a patio dot com. I don't think it was anything in between. And now then Mike's Organic and now it Mike's Organic has closed and they are looking to go to the original use again. So if you would just talk to us about what you're thinking. Ready to go.
Okay, um, Lily and Fang speaking on behalf of six hundred East Putnam Avenue. Um, Madam Chair and members of the planning and zoning. Um, we are seeking approval to change, um, the use back from, um, back to restaurant. It was restaurant as you already mentioned. And then to retail grocery. And we do not believe it will be ever going back to grocery, so we are looking to change it to restaurant. Um, it is currently vacant. And we feel like this would be in our best interest, um, as we look for a new tenant, um, to make it something that, um, planning and zoning will.
And the community.
And the community would want going forward. Um, it, uh, it was an IHOP for twenty years. And then it was patio dot com for about thirty years. And we've owned it since nineteen eighty-four. Um, and it currently is one point one one four acres with, um, three thousand fourteen usable, um, square foot feet with two handicap bathrooms. And forty-six parking spaces.
And, um, Mr. McRae has a question for you, Ms. Fang.
Okay.
Uh, question more of a suggestion. Because you're going from a grocery store to a restaurant. It's almost because of all of the time and effort that was put in for all the parking and everything out there is kind of going backwards a little bit in terms of your considerations. You have kind of a set number of parking spaces, which would kind of drive how many seats? And would then drive the size of your kitchen. So if you're kind of looking at that, it's all about the seats in the kitchen because that's something you don't have. So I think, uh, understanding you probably don't want to change your site plan and the parking, so you almost like you're doing it in reverse.
Right, sir, the, um, the original IHOP had fifty-one parking spaces. And we currently have, um, forty-six parking spaces. The reason why the numbers changed was because of the width of the driveway, which has changed from uh, the sixties to today's bigger SUVs.
Right, I I almost would consider actually, yes, it was an IHOP, but many, many, many years ago and things have changed. So in a sense, as I would see this, it's an existing grocery store that's becoming a restaurant regardless of order happened years ago. So I have to look at the site conditions as they are today.
The other way around, Nick.
Forty-six spaces is forty-six spaces uh, that you have now that you're really not going to want to change. So kind of like putting this all together as a as a big mix of things, spaces, seats, kitchen size, that kind of thing.
Right, so I think the the guidance that we've heard is that if it's roughly um, one spot per three seats that.
Exactly. Not even roughly. You nailed it.
Right, so that would give, you know, thirty-three seats, I think it was for about ninety seats and then ten or so extra for employee parking. That would all be subject to, to, you know, total occupancy and fire safety too, but.
Exactly.
That's what we're thinking.
Yeah, and so, um, just to take it to, uh, Mr. Lo, go ahead.
Oh, quick question. Did, uh, I know it was only yesterday, but did was there some discussion of uh, the potential to expand the parking capacity? Or am I thinking about something entirely different?
For more parking?
Yes.
Um, I I believe that the parking is pretty maxed out. We do have a lot of intensive landscape plan. Um, and green space that.
Was there some consideration? I'm sorry to interrupt, but but was there some consideration for purchase? There's an option to purchase or?
Oh, yes, the triangular piece in the front of, um, the property is owned by the State of Connecticut. And, uh, we have, uh, approached them to purchase it. However, I believe that the town of Greenwich has the first right of refusal and then um, before the state would agree to sell it, but I think they're keeping it in case they ever widen the post road.
Oh, okay. Thank you for, uh, helping me out on this because it's recollection.
In the meantime, I think we're planning on, um, the town is planning on planting a lot of trees along that triangular strip. I think.
Thank you and.
Planning for many years.
Yep. Thank you for supporting that. We really appreciate it. Patrick briefed us that you were supportive of that and we really appreciate it. We're trying so hard to make the post road look more welcoming. So basically, one of what you were hearing from Nick, the most important concern for us is if you didn't have enough parking, you're limited on where your overflow can really go. You've got some because, um, probably the lot across the way is empty at night. Across a cross extension.
Well, it's it's it does town parking, so I would not.
Right. Oh, it's town parking, but I so it's not. I mean, let's just leave it at. Let's start with. Let me just back up and say, look, our first concern is there is really nowhere to go if you're going there and you've got no place to park. So our first priority would be to ensure that whatever restaurant you you go to, and I think it was what Nick was saying, is it works well with the park. to ensure that whatever restaurant you you go to, and I think it was what Nick was saying, is it works well with the park. And then everybody's staying on site.
Right.
That's the biggest piece of feedback, and I think I believe that's where Nick was going.
Yeah.
The biggest piece of feedback we can give you.
You have a great parking layout that's really well landscaped. That has a set number of spaces. So if you're kind of going backwards into the seats, into the kitchen, then you're not relying on overflow parking or anything like that. And 90 seats, as you said, Mr. Eng was, you know, it's it's 90 seats, subject to occupancy, you know, all of that. So kind of start start with your your biggest constraint is the number of spaces, and then maybe get exactly what's going to happen inside the building.
Definitely. Okay.
That's all I've got is just, we want to see the parking work because we're tight for parking in town, and you know that because you go downtown and you get frustrated and you own property all over town. So we know. Anybody else have comments?
Really good barbecue. Did I say that out loud?
Okay. But you know, it's a joke. It's a joke. It's a joke because that's the rumor. And Nick is just repeating the rumors. That that's been the rumor in town, but rumors are rumors. Do you have anything you want to ask us?
I think that's pretty much it.
So you stayed stayed with us all these hours just for very little, but you know, basically, you have a good site. And it has lots of parking and you should be able to make a use work.
Okay.
Yep. And our, you know, I guess just to close, our intention is that, you know, later on, once we do have, you know, the the potential tenant and there are official plans to remodel and add the kitchen and the grease traps and all that, you know.
Health department approvals, you have to go to the health department and get all the approvals. And they would say, and and they would actually do it prior to prior to that as the work is going. So yes, they would give you all the specs and give you the approvals, and then it's you're just gonna, as Nick mentioned, is fire, health, or parking going to be your limitation? And that you'll just figure it out when you start designing the space. But it's too bad because they tore out the kitchen when they did patio, so now you're going back. But there is really probably a very good opportunity in the area. Okay, nobody else? All right. So we'll see you when you come back. And we're sorry you stuck stuck with us for.
That's okay. I love listening to you guys. It's great.
Really?
Everything that you do for the town.
Oh, my gosh, it's hysterical because I think we're good for insomnia.
Yeah.
I think you're great anyways.
Good luck. We're behind you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Wait, wait, wait. Before you go, does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application at 600 East Putnam, which was Mike's Organic? Kindly raise your virtual hand. Anybody from the public wish to speak? Oh, okay. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Now we have Mr. Tessie, and we're ready to go.
Mr. Tessie again?
I know, but he was, but see, now the problem, Mr. Mr. Bazili is not here to supervise Mr. Tessie.
We'll bring bring back Mr. Hegney.
Oh. No, he doesn't supervise Mr. Tessie. Only Mr. Bazili supervises Mr. Tessie. Okay. Our next application, our next discussion item is Greenwich Park LLC for a pre-application review. And this is, it's it's a it's a very interesting application you that we discussed at length on Monday. It is to convert Building A in the Greenwich Office Park to a residential building from office use to 34 dwelling units on three floors above a parking garage. And they're also going to propose to modify Section 6110 so that it allows a payment of a fee in lieu so that the applicant does not have to provide in these 34 units, the 30, the affordable that they're required to provide. And so there are two pieces of this. One is the office conversion. And the other one is, and that'll be the site plan. And in that office conversion, from what we understood yesterday, they would add a story. And then the other one is they want to propose a change to 6110. Mr. Tessie, do you want to comment? Or do you, can we just jump in and give you thoughts?
I want to just give you some preliminary comments.
Okay.
Thought or thought process here. The the commission has has, I think openly discussed the potential for making additional revisions to Section 6110 to make it more attractive to owners, purchasers to to develop properties into commercial zones that 6110 would apply to. What's the purpose of one? Main purpose is to allow you greater control vis a vis, of course, the 830G type projects. And so we took that to heart in consideration of what incentives would there be to stay within the zoning regulations to try to trump 830G proposals? And to me, an obvious one was the Payment in Loop program. It keeps it within the town. It I think it's a win-win for everybody. It keeps the project within the town regulations, within your authority. It provides, as I drafted this application, I'm sorry, the regulation, instant cash to, and I'm proposing directly to the, as you can read, the Greenwich Communities Organization, who can put that cash to work. I've talked to Mr. Romeo and Mr. Johnson about this application. I believe they're supportive of it. They, and I believe they'd be happy to speak. I'm not sure if either one stayed this long.
No, they did. In fact, I have Mr. Romeo's assurance that he was going to stick it out, and he's still here.
Good. Well, he's a young man. He can do it.
So I don't know why.
So what the point is, you look at what goals you you really want to check off here with 6110 and its purpose and and the incentivization, if you will, if that's a word, built into that, built into that program. And I know you had a discussion and a concern about having the cash available and being able to put it to use irrespective of a program. And I think Sam and Tony are can can describe how they can do that quickly. I changed the 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 concept, which I was not a big fan of, that you have in a BEXR zone of a a token payment in the beginning and payments in the future. Not going to get into that program. There'll be another day for that. But I think it's important, again, to get alcohol instant cash. I think it was important to build into the program, and I'm not wedded to the methodology that you deal with today's dollars today and tomorrow's dollars tomorrow within the regulation. And that's why I chose to come up with a program that ties it, in this case, to something that's already built into the 6110 regulation, which is the median income of town employees. So as that goes up, so does that payment to go up. So you're getting dollars at the time you implement the dollars and not backwards, if you will, which is that you give an approval. Again, I got to use the example of BEXR zone. And you and you could be too, don't receive the funds. When I say you, the trust fund, I think in that case, doesn't see the doesn't see the money start to flow in in the bigger amounts for a number of years in the federal, you've given given that approval. So I tried to touch bases, but in that in this concept, and I appreciated the fact that you all wanted to hear about it and consider it. And I think you all keep an open mind, but it's actually in the in the interest of the town. Now, overall, and the goal of increasing our affordable housing stock in this town. And when it comes to the repurposing of of commercial buildings, particularly office buildings, I know it's it's a daunting effort, and sometimes it's easier, and sometimes it's it's impossible, given a number of issues having to do with a building itself. This particular building, Mr. Ferraris, you know, I'll call it in-house, you know, my counterpart, inside counterpart, if you will, Kevin Molnar, made a determination that this building was suitable for a conversion and in an upgrade, which it needs, which it's never had. It's been three plus years since the building's been occupied. And it's just a matter of facing the realities of the marketplace today that it seemed to make sense to move forward. It's not cheap. It's nothing's guaranteed out there in the world, particularly the development world today. But but John didn't want to see this building just like fallow for a long time. Now, for any longer time. I think the building as positioned on the property is interesting because it is a building that basically is has length, has depth from a street standpoint. And its width is relatively narrow, and the building is set back from Valley Drive. So although we're adding another story, you are, you do have that distance and that step back built in, and you have a rather narrow building. So we think this building checks a lot of boxes in that regard in terms of streetscape. We think that there is an understanding, at least I do, that the commission could be concerned about, well, if we implement this or a variation of this on a townwide basis, what are we getting into? And you started to talk about, which is interesting to me, and I didn't think about it, and I'll kind of credit you all with this, with that, okay. We understand there could be a need for repurposing, and it could be a win-win. And so you thought about, should we have an overlay of repurposed buildings?
So I got two people with their hand up, but I am going to forward to Patrick sometime in the next few days. I talked to Westcog after the briefing, and they have sample regulations for office to residential conversion. We'd like to give you the option to consider that, and I will get it to Patrick so that you consider what we might do rather than do 6110 and tackle it for all business zones, which is a big bite of the apple. It's
I have a solution. I'll let you finish.
Okay, so what we're gonna do, whatever your solution is, what we said yesterday is we'd like you to think about a regulation that just addresses office to residential conversion. And that encourages people to not have buildings like fallow, and we will get those regulations from around Connecticut, and we will give them to you.
I can appreciate that, and I'm happy to look at them, but let me make a just let me make my point here, because I thought about that. And obviously, I think it's a good idea because it was my idea. But it came, this genesis came from you all, which is this. We have the GBO zone. And the GBO zone is where we, by zoning design, is where we have the bulk. And I don't know, because the central Greenwich office buildings are not going to get converted. You know, the the Class A buildings, they're not going to get converted. The converted buildings are really going to come from the periphery, the west side and the east side of Greenwich are where you have the GBO zone. So if we look at the GBO, just putting it on the table, if we look at, if we isolate this to the GBO zone, you can then decide, you can launch from there, whether we want to go any farther, because that works for us. And I think it works for the town as a first step, because that's what we're talking about. The 6110 parameters are important. You already have to build them. You already have them built in. So this can be an adjunct to the 6110, but limited to this GBO zone. Just something for you all to think about in that regard.
Okay.
With that, and given the time, I just wanted to get that all out.
All right. Okay, so we're gonna let Mr. McRae and then Ms. Jenkins. I'm like moving things along here. Mr. McRae.
Okay.
Okay, so just, I I think Chairwoman actually kind of answered some of the questions, but was it the 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 payment? Had you considered giving it to the Affordable Trust Fund as a specific to help with our our global, all of the town and the affordable housing across the whole town? I the the, I'm kind of uncomfortable here with the 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 6110 and actually kind of setting up the, you know, the affordable housing as we codify it somewhere else. It's not inclusive. To me, that's a little bit more comfortable because now I'm saying I can build great here, but I'm going to push everything off someplace else. The other thing, it was like you, this kind of a situation, the applicant will get all of the incentives. Then but then somebody else gets the burden of trying to do a project that's now just affordable housing seems a little strange to me. That idea, though, of the GBO zone only, if I think that's what you're suggesting, Mr. Tessie, sounds intriguing, because I think we actually did a couple of years ago with.
Many years ago, we did that with the liquor. We opened up.
No, no, no. It was the retirement home there on Old Track Road.
Oh, yeah.
We actually talked to council at the time. Where can we do this in each one of the specific, because it was tied to a zone? And it actually, I think what happened, it was the it was zone specific. And then you had to have a specific amount of area, so on and so forth. It was actually, it worked really well, because then it went, it was like, okay, it's not everything in every GBO zone. It's actually GBO, but more parameters to it.
Let me respond. Let me respond to you, Mr. Mr. McRae.
Yeah.
Here where you're coming from. The fundamental question about Payment in Loop, and as you all recognized yesterday, many communities have a Payment in Loop. Okay, it's it's a it's a vehicle to a to to an end goal. And that's what it always is. There are towns, municipalities such as Stanford, that doesn't have an 830G problem, but provides for that, and there are others that do have 830G problems. But I'm trying to come up with something that here that makes sense for everyone. I've seen you wrestle, obviously, with some of my projects. I've seen you wrestle with with 62, not 62 Mason Street, apologize, with the Mason Street project at the end of at the end of Mason Street. I don't know his decision that's yet to come. Here, we're trying to figure out when you, situation we are, you have repur, you know, it's for repurposing that we're refocusing in on it, right? So the GBO zone, and maybe it's limited to repurposing the buildings in the GBO zone. Okay, because again, it's an adjunct to six. I like it as an adjunct. I call it an adjunct or add-on or amendment, obviously, to six 6110. So you're to 6110. So you're you're incentivizing that conversion. You want to see whether it's from a tax standpoint or whether it's from a blight standpoint, you want to see those buildings active. And they can be repurposed. We know it's not cheap to repurpose, but there's there's enough incentive and balance there and a win for the town. I don't think it's a burden. I don't think the the Greenwich Communities considers it considers it a burden to to be able to fund the, you know, housing for those who can't afford market rents at all. I I think that's that's their charge.
Oh, no, absolutely. I totally agree with you.
That's their charge. And you know, we've we've tried to fight the good fight, and you try to work with us to make it happen. And it's, you know, it's a struggle to find the right locations, but they have many options when they get money.
Mr. Tessie.
Purchase two family homes. They can get smaller.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Tessie, we know, we know all that.
To Mr. Mr. I'm done. Mr. McRae, that's all.
Okay. All right. Ms. Jenkins. Ms. Jenkins is next. Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Tessie, the the concern I have about Payment in Loop is that we have not adopted it except in very limited circumstances so far for a reason. And that is 6110 specifically is to incentivize construction, not incentivize funding of other construction. We wanted people who were building a building to consider including in that project dwelling units that would be more mid-level available. So I'm a little concerned only because it seems to say a 6110. Yeah, we're incentivizing, we're going to give you additional space and and allow you to exceed the standards applicable in a business zone. Or you can give us money, but you are you're already working on a building that would be, in this case, presumably appropriate because it's going to be turning into residential. And again, the one situation that we we just have have addressed so far was because it was simply some question about the suitability of that particular project for purposes of of affordable housing. It seems to me you've got a central Greenwich location close to bus stops on the on the post road. There are so many businesses that if they converted from business use to residential, would be entirely appropriate. There are so many businesses that if they converted from business use to residential, would be entirely appropriate. And I, I, my preference would be that we incentivize the construction when you're working on a building. Not take money and try to find land and try to find uh other things. There's an incentive, there's size incentives in six one ten that are supposed to encourage. The the inclusion of affordable housing, I just, it seems to me, we're giving up this, the current opportunity. With current construction. For the opportunity to take money and then have the additional delay and planning and zoning issues associated with some other project. So again, it's meant to incentivize the construction, and you're working on a building, you have current and construction. Where it would be appropriate, so I I hesitate only because. It seems to cut the ground out from six one ten, because you're saying, we've got this great six one ten, it incentivizes inclusion of affordable housing. But but don't worry about it, you, there are alternatives. And you're working on a building, it's appropriate for affordable housing. I'd like to see six one ten used rather than avoided. So that's just, again, six one ten is intended to be an incentive in and of itself, so I'm very troubled by the idea of a payment in lieu. As a, as a general proposition.
Okay.
I I I, again, I need to respond. The problem with.
This is supposed to be twenty minutes, no, no, wait, wait.
Mr. Tessie, I'm sorry, it's a pre-op, it's a pre-op, Mr. Tessie, and I'm. To you, and I appreciate.
Tessie. This is a pre-op. The way it works is, we tell you our concerns. You don't argue with us in the pre-op, you don't make the case, no, Mr. Tessie, we can't hear you right now. We can't hear you, I muted you. We, in a pre-op, just listen, in a pre-op. You tell us what you're proposing. And we share three, our concerns and issues with you. You don't make the presentation on behalf of the application yet. You just go away with our concerns and develop an application that addresses, don't argue with us right now, argue with us when you come back. Don't try to argue Mary down, she doesn't have any information, you're at a pre-op. Now, I'm gonna let Arn go next. But don't argue with him, just hear him out, okay? Okay, now you can unmute.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, I I have a short question, and that is, we've seen a hesitancy on the part of developers. Who are building dwelling units for sale, multifamily dwelling units for sale. In including affordable housing within their. Dwelling units as opposed to, and within their building as opposed to developers who are building. Uh, you know, apartment buildings for rent. Can you tell us your plans, that are you building apartments for sale or for rent?
That you can answer.
Given the current cost of construction, most probably those units will be for sale.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the commission? Okay, um, again, don't argue with me, I'm just gonna tell you, wait, 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 wait. I'm just gonna tell you where I'm coming out. And what my issues are, and then when you come back, you tell me why I'm wrong, but wait till you come back, okay? Number one. Fee and lieu is problematic. Um, the, we mentioned it yesterday, you heard us talk about it, when you come back. Talk to us about how you were going to address those concerns that we're raising about the fee and lieu, wait till you come back. The valuation. I, I think that Greenwich communities will tell us, yes, they can put the money to work. The other thing is, this moral issue for us of. It's supposed to be inclusionary zoning, it's supposed to be onsite. On the other hand, we're clear that when you're doing condominiums, we do understand that it's very hard with condominiums. So we might be willing to consider a regulation. That fa, that does fee and lieu and condominiums, I don't know how people are going to feel about that, I'm just throwing out. In general. I am uncomfortable with being exclusionary in six one ten and moving people elsewhere. At the same time, I would love to support Greenwich communities. I would be more comfortable, I think personally, to follow the paths of the Connecticut towns we know and love. In our neighborhood. Who have regulations for the conversion of office. And to just, if we do that, we're able to isolate it, we could still do a fee and lieu, but it would be narrower. I suspect that the issue is that you're right. And what Joe Pacora is listening, and he always says, Margarita, you didn't make six one ten generous enough. That's really what you're aiming for here, because you're going to come back with a fifty-foot-high building where we allow a maximum of forty-seven and a half. So you're going to come in with more incentive. So you're gonna, whichever way you do, we have hesitation about fee and lieu. Among those hesitations is that the RTM was very opposed to us doing, doing it, even though it's fully in our authority. So convince us that we're not giving up inclusion. Because one of the problems is, as you know, I go testify in Hartford. And us paying money for the lower-income people to go live somewhere else. Is harder to do than for us to have inclusionary zoning, the first thing they ask us is, do you have inclusionary zoning? So what I'd like to do is be able to say, yes, I have inclusionary zoning, I have six one ten. But if you do an office conversion with a much more prohibitive cost set. We could have different incentives for you, so just think about that. When you come back and be ready to argue with me, and I'll be really good, and I'll listen to the argument for as long as I can stand.
Actually, I wasn't going to argue, I just wanted to point out.
We're arguing with Mary.
No, I didn't get a chance to argue with Mary. I was trying to just say to Mary, the one, the one thing I I I pointed out at the beginning was something very simple, eight. Eight. Uh, I'm six one ten, it's just not a great regulation.
I get it, we get that, and we're gonna.
Saying, so.
We get it.
I was trying to come up with an enhancement program for it, number one.
Got it.
There's two points, number one.
Got it.
Two, on the inclusionary aspect of this. The the payment in lieu is embedded in eight two I of the regulate, of the state.
Correct, it's in our authority, eight two, it does.
Most importantly, it's within your authority, it's recognized in a state affordable housing statute.
I.
As, as an appropriate alternate, that's all.
Okay, so, Mr. Tessie, okay, so don't argue, don't argue with me.
I just pointed.
Okay, so I'm just telling you, I've read eight two, I've read all of eight two millions of times, remember, I've been here a while. I know what it says. And what I'm telling you is, I go and testify in Hartford, or I go to these groups with the housing advocates, and they say. Do you have inclusionary zoning? For me to say, oh, no, we have fee and lieu is harder. If we had. An office conversion sweetener. That might be easier to do, just saying, and in addition, we absolutely recognize, and I don't want to hear from Joe Pacora. That builders are not jumping on the opportunity. To use our six one ten regulation, we got that, and we know we have to make it better. We got that, I would do those separately. When you ask us to do six one ten and sweeten it, you are taking on a huge project, do you just want to do the office conversion? And get it done so Mr. Ferrari can do his project, I would say, take the path of least resistance.
That's why, that's why I brought it up, I just said, well, let's remember, it's GBO zone, that's why I brought that up.
But you're touching six one ten, I would say.
Touch six one ten, laissez faire, no problem.
Consider, look at the office conversions and see if that could work for you, if it doesn't, come back.
We have an interesting leader, there's an old regulation that was, was done back uh. Called the INRE, INDRE zone. Which was, was put in actually in connection with uh the conversion of the Home Light Building on the corner of. Uh Pemberwick in in Comley. Way back when, and I'll look at that old, dust that old model off.
You don't have to, because everybody is writing new ones.
All right, you're, I forgot, you're gonna give them to me, thank you.
Yeah, the state is coming, the state is actually talking about legislating. Office conversions and giving incentives, they were talking about tax incentives. Um, so there's a lot going on in this field, which you're probably tracking, so we'll get you what the sample regs are.
I appreciate it.
Then you weigh it. But I, I think tackling six one ten is hard, and I have some issues around doing the fee and lieu now. Um.
Look at it.
I want to hear Sam, so Sam, would you raise your hand so I can see you and bring you in? All right.
What happened?
I don't know, he's got his hand up, he's coming, and just unmute, and then you're all set.
Damn, I am.
Damn, you are. You spent a whole evening with us, so here's the question. Um, you're here to speak about this project, um, this proposal, and I emailed it to you as soon as we knew about it, because we wanted to hear what you guys said. The biggest concern that you've had on Greenwich America, on the American Can. Has been the valuation per unit. How much money per unit we're being given? One of my fears is, that is not something PNC can easily tackle, and we need to, if we were to do fee and lieu. We would need help on how much money. Would be given, it's two unit, two affordables that would have to be done, state area median. That would have to be done in this building, how much money? Would compensate so that you can build two units or can do a two-unit conversion, don't answer me now, but that would be. You would be one of the people to tell us that number.
Okay.
Okay. If we were to consider this, you would say, I need eight million dollars for each unit that they don't build.
No, I wouldn't say that.
Okay.
I'd be, I'd be to the point and say, costs us between five and six hundred thousand dollars per unit right now. To build affordable housing. And that's having the land.
Okay.
That's what it costs us to do Armstrong Court, the eighteen units, six hundred thousand.
I, and I assume Mr. Ferrari and Mr. Tessie already know this.
Yes.
Okay, because we had sent you the thing even before they told you, okay. So that would be our first question, and we would want to know that you could use it, I still am concerned, Mr. Tessie. I've got the scars from the RTM discussions about fee and low, they were ugly. Okay.
No comment.
They formed a special committee. And they were, they said they wanted to forbid us to do it, and we said, no, we have the sole authority to do it. It's given to us by the state, and you can't take away our authority granted to us by the state. All right, that's all I got, Sam, anything else, any other comments on this?
Well, no, I I I. I kind of really like the proposal that is coming through from Mr. Ferrari. And uh, Mr. Tessie, uh, you know, we do have. Affordable housing in every area in town but one right now. I don't know if you realize that.
Oh, yeah, I totally realize that, I've looked at the map.
The only, only place that we don't have it, we have it.
Actually, you do, um, didn't we make the one unit in the station house affordable? Yeah, we did make the one unit, and we settled in court and we got one unit, it was better than nothing.
We're in Old Greenwich?
Yeah. It was better than nothing.
Right, well, we don't, the housing authority.
Yeah.
We have, we have affordable housing.
Damn, you gotta think about all of us.
Yeah, I do, I want to spread it out all over town.
Yeah, okay, so you would go to Old Greenwich.
Building, building affordable housing is an honor, it's not a burden for us.
Yeah, we know that.
And, and I think we have a pretty good track record of doing that. And what we would do, other than trying to go through the, to the state for financing and all the regulations that, tax credits. The money that we would get, we would use quicker by buying multifamily homes. Adding on additions to our current properties that we can renovate, and we could add units. Al- already, and they're in an area that people don't even know we're in. So we could blend in the community really nice with that money, use it real quick. Rather than have to go through the tax credit and the regulations that we have to do.
So they have a path to the acceptance, the problem we have is that it means lack of inclusion, but we get. We've heard on a certain application, we can't mention, that. Condominiums that you make affordable is really tough. And we know what, that number we do know, okay, anything else, any other guidance, anybody want to say anything? Okay, so if nobody wants to say anything, we'll see you when you come back, Mr. Tessie.
Um, if not sooner.
No, don't come to my house and threaten me.
Threaten anybody, it was a, it was supposed to be a night of love, you know?
Okay, well, all right, okay, so we'll see you when you come back, and I'll talk to Patrick and Tracy some more about. Um, this whole thing with inclusion.
Uh, yeah, it was a good, healthy discussion, really, really was. Get this all on the table, again, the end, the end of the day, we are trying to increase. Our stock of affordable housing for all the right, all the right reasons. And I, yeah, I wouldn't get hung up on the specific vehicle, but I'd love to see those uh model regulations on the conversion.
We're gonna get them to you, because.
Appreciate it.
Um, the regulations are at Westcog, has promised them.
Good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all, good evening.
So that's, um, that's Charlie, Tracy. Whom I know you know, Bittich. So I told, so I wrote Charlie, and I asked him, okey-dokey, so on the calendar. Just quickly, um, one extra thought, and I mentioned it to Tracy today. We should be back in businesses early in September after Labor Day if we can be. I think it's bad optics if we're out. Taking a break after Labor Day, because the phones start bouncing off the hook. We don't get vacation after Labor Day anyway, everybody started emailing it, boom, on the Tuesday.
This argues in favor of purple.
Yeah, and, and of course, we love August, okay, uh, did you want to say something else, Mr. Low?
Yes, good night and have a pleasant.
No, wait, wait, we're not totally done, I hereby move approval of the April fourth, twenty twenty-three minutes. Uh, Mr. Low and Mr. Wells were absent from that meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
Um, Jones has seconded, I'll take a voice, voice, voice vote from the people who were there, all in favor. I. I hereby move approval of the July nine, twenty twenty-four. Uh, minutes, everybody was there.
Okay.
Matt. Low has seconded.
Madam Chair, I, I'm sorry, I seconded the April four because Ann Noel wasn't with us yet.
Oh. Interesting, thank you, Jones is, Jones did not second that, she thinks she was.
No, I didn't.
I did. I didn't even look, I just looked at who was absent, okay, that was the other joke.
Female, sure, madam chair.
Okay. Oh, the fourth one. I forgot all about her. Um, I hereby move approval of the July ninth, twenty twenty-four minutes, we were all here.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, all in favor?
Aye.
August twelfth, twenty twenty-four, absent were Yeski and Jones.
Do we not need a second, or you do?
I'm waiting for you.
Well, you missed the second on the previous one, but that's all right, I'll second this, aye.
Wait, which one was this I was absent for?
August twelfth. I have you noted as absent. In the minutes, it says you were absent. Doesn't matter, um, take a look at the minutes and send a correction, and we can correct them after the approval.
That's fine.
Was not there at one in June. Okay, Lozy.
That August twelfth, hold on.
This is not going to show up in anybody's.
Yeah.
Where. Yeah, I just thought it's not the right date.
It's not the right date, let's, let's not vote on the last one, that's not the right date.
Oh, good, August twelfth, of course it isn't the right date, I'm, I get this way, August sixth was our meeting.
We understand.
Oh, August twelfth was a special meeting.
August twelfth was a special meeting, that's what it was, the training session. The training session. Did you go to? Did you, did you go, Jones?
No, I didn't go to that.
So Jones missed it, August twelfth is right, that's when we had the training session.
All right.
Look at, double check my calendar.
Training session, that, August twelfth was the MI extension for the rank.
Yeah.
And we only, all right.
It was midday, and it's buried in my calendar here, thank you, Tracy.
I was on a plane.
You can tell I read the minutes, right?
And Pete, Mr. Low, you seconded in July twenty-third, so we're going with that.
All right, Miss.
Skip right over you.
Low, could you second August twelfth, twenty twenty-four here?
I'll do that also, I was here.
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 You know, I get punchy at the end.
At just at the end, though.
The Fink binder thing. Were the bouncing Fink binders, that was one of the funnier moments we've had in a while. Which Mr. Fink binder is going to stand up? But we finally got it done.
Should I put that in the book, bouncing Fink binder?
Well, we finally know, we got the message to them, they know what they need to do, we got it done, it was just. Bad, okay, so we'll see you guys soon.
I don't think so.
And I'm making you this, okay.
But I'm making it, oh, okay, that's right. Never mind. Thank you.
It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
It's been an honor.
Signing off. Thank you.
All right.